Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco Council Workshop Meeting. The council thanks you for being part of our city government. At workshop meetings, the council discusses issues, but no formal action is taken. The agenda packet is available on the City of Pasco's website at www.pasco-wa.gov/agenda. Please note that the city council meetings continue to be held remotely and may be accessed through GoToWebinar. This meeting will be, is being also televised live on Pasco TV, Channel 191, on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland, and also streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, and YouTube channel. This and previous council meeting videos is available on the city's website. Through Proclamation Number 20-28.8, Governor Inslee extended the directive making temporary changes to the Open Public Meetings Act. These virtual meetings will continue until the OPMA restrictions are lifted. And lastly, the public may submit their comments and/or questions for items not on the agenda by contacting the city manager, or city clerk, or using the feedback form on the city's website. And with housekeeping out of the way, I just want to continue to be consistent and remind everybody that we are wearing masks. We are more than six feet apart, and social distancing within our chambers here. And obviously, making every effort to, to take every precaution to avoid any type of spread of the virus. And I want to just thank the community at this point for their willingness to, to, to do what's right for, for everybody in the community. Our numbers seem to be going down just slightly, but we're still way far off where we need to be. But again, we just want to keep reminding people that use social distancing and please just care for others and, and continue being the Pasco resident that we all want each other to be. So, thank you very much for that. Next, we're going to get to a roll call. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Alvarado.
Present.
Maloney.
Present.
Roach.
Present.
Milne.
Present.
Serrano.
Mayor.
Mayor Protem Barajas.
Present.
Mayor Martinez.
Present.
Seven accounted for, Mayor.
Thank you. Everybody's here, and thank you all for joining us tonight. If we all, would you please stand with me so we can pledge allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. And moving right along, we will go to item four, verbal reports from council members. Any council member would like to make an announcement or a comment on any reports for the past week?
This is Councilmember Alvarado.
Yes, Mr. Alvarado.
Thank you. I just wanted to share that I joined a board, a board that I was representing the city before in previous years for Greater Columbia Economic Community Health. I allocated some funding to do a campaign targeting Hispanic population with the importance of wearing masks. And so, we filmed the video today, and I'll be coming forth. It's an addition to a lot of the other media that's going out, but this one will be in Spanish. And it's kind of a luchador theme. Why do you fight? I fight. And then you say different, you know, reasons why you fight, and you fight by putting on your mask. And I have here a luchador mask that the DPDA has been putting together. So, just a great way to piggyback on some other ideas of what people are doing to promote just a continual fight of this virus that we can all do our part. So, I just wanted to share that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarado. And I'll just piggyback on that just a little bit. I'm actually participating in the same campaign, and I'll be doing my little, my little announcement tomorrow afternoon. So, thank you for doing that. And again, very important to continue to, to use the mask if nothing else. These are the, this is the only tool we have right now to continue with our businesses open and, and look forward to lowering the spread of the virus. Anybody, anybody else?
This is Serrano. Today, I attended remotely a meeting with the Hanford Area Economic Investment Fund Committee. We had a great chat about fortunately, what we do is we lend out smaller loans to various businesses, both municipal and private sector. Obviously, the private sector business loans are not performing terribly well right now. We have several on abeyance. But our public sector loans, like the Port of Pasco and City, and other local municipalities are performing well. They're paying on time. So, thanks for keeping on paying the bills, folks. You know, it's, it's important that as we try to rebound, you know, hopefully, some folks will be also seeking money from the Hanford Area Economic Investment Fund Committee. Because we try to give favorable terms to local job creators. So, to anyone listening out there, you know, obviously, as, as we come out of this and have that economic up term that we hope to see soon, keep that in mind if you're looking for lending opportunities, or borrowing opportunities, that is. It's a great committee to work for, and certainly, we're interested in getting our money out there when we can. So, that's all I've got for an update. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Serrano. Appreciate that. You know, I know that it's, it's something that, it's a process, and it takes a little while to go through, but the, the funds are there. Appreciate you going to those meetings and then, and trying to help in that manner and distribute those Hanford funds the way, the way you guys do. So, thank you for doing that, Mr. Serrano. If there's nobody else, we'll move right along to item number five. And the first item for discussion is the Transportation System Master Plan Update Presentation. And Mr. Dan Ford, are you on the line today? Or Mr. Rick White?
Yes, I am. Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Council. This evening, I'd like to introduce Carl Springer from DKS Consultants. And Carl is going to give us a presentation. For those that might remember, DKS does quite a number of transportation efforts for the City of Pasco. One of those, obviously, being the Transportation System Master Plan. And what we'd like to bring to you this evening is just an update to bring council up to speed as to where we are with this, this product. So, I'll turn it over to Carl.
Thanks, Dan. This is Carl Springer, talking to you from beautiful Portland, Oregon, where it's 101 degrees right now. I think you guys are a little ahead of us from what Dan tells me. You guys are just a little bit hotter. Assuming you guys can hear me all right. I think it's John is running the slides. Is that correct?
It's actually, hi, this is John Fundfar, Communications Program Manager. Director Sigdel is running the slides, and she will advance them as you need to.
Okay. Well, I still see the city council meeting cover plate. Is there more slides? There we go. Now, we're talking. All right. Thank you. So, this, as Dan mentioned, this is just an overview of where we're, where we're at and kind of what the whole process hopes to achieve. A Transportation System Master Plan, the way we see it as a guide for how the City of Pasco and your partner agencies are going to make investments in your transportation system. Our focus really is making sure that it's aligning with what's important to your community, the values and your vision for the future. We spend a lot of energy in the first stage of the process to understand what's important to your city and to develop our analytical process to answer the questions that will help you make good decisions. So, that's step one. Step two is to, whoa, come back, go back. All right. Should I come up with a code word for next slide? I'll just say next slide. How's that? So, then we come up with trends in terms of how the city will be growing. We have data from the local MPO about that, and the city's worked hard, being confident with the land use estimates for Pasco. And we also have tools that tell us how that your neighboring cities expect to grow as well. So, that's all part of the process in doing forecasts. The last piece is developing plan updates, looking at how you're designing your street system, and considering what metrics you're using to monitor your system going forward. All right. Next slide, please. So, the schedule, we began, it runs about a year and a half. We began at the tail end of 2019. There's really three big chunks. It's understanding where the city is today and how well the system's working. That's really the first major piece of effort for us. We have chosen to do a process where we develop planned chapters as we go, so you don't have to wait till 2021 to see something. We'll be running those through staff as we develop them. Those funny-looking colored dots at the bottom of this diagram, those are public outreach efforts. You may know a little bit about the public survey that was posted a couple of months ago, and I got a little bit, a little snapshot of that to talk to you about today. For us, the fun part is, is ahead of us. It's the evaluation that we do in terms of how we see the city growing and really what it is you as a city can choose to do about it. So, we've done the goals and policies review. We've done a first step into the public involvement work. We've captured how the system works today, and we've run the first open house. That's to be, well, actually, the open house is coming up. We ran a survey, is what we've done so far. So, let's, let's roll on to the next slide. So, this is what I call the spaghetti map. This is what we put together and say, here's all the, here's all the pieces of the city that we think really needs to be attended to as we go through the planning process. So, there's a collection of things shown here, and let me just walk through a couple of them, because I know this is a quick overview. So, all those numbers inside the square box in the top right, those are the steady intersections we looked at that are listed here. We actually looked at a total of 50, but we're calling your attention to 14 here in this diagram. Those are all with, the 14 that are shown here are ones with some sort of capacity concerns during the peak hours of the day. Those little icons that show two cars side by side, that's where you have crash rates that are significantly above average and need attention to. The other indicators on there talk about high crash corridors. That would be Sylvester and Court, and of course, burden on the north side. Those are all things that we will be looking to addressing as we move forward with the planning process. Next slide.
Can I interject real quickly?
Sure.
I know, I noticed I was on 395 over the weekend and noticed that the two intersections, they have the two cars that symbolize accident rates. They've already added additional lanes. Is, is that part of this, or is that separate from this?
We'll certainly look at the recent work. If, if you, and I'm, I'm sorry, who, who's, who was just talking?
This is Mayor Saul Martinez. Sorry.
Fair enough, Mayor. So, if you know much about traffic safety studies, it's, it's, it's kind of a window of information, because we look at crash rates over a five-year period, and we look at what's abnormal in that five-year period. But certainly, any kind of recent work or improvements, like you noticed, doesn't get captured in that. So, we'll just double-check to make sure that the improvements that have been done are appropriate, given the patterns we've seen. I suspect they are. That's usually the way those things work.
Okay.
But we'll certainly look at that to confirm.
Thank you.
Sure enough. Another important piece for us as system planners is what we call system connectivity. So, that involves a couple of aspects. How your neighborhoods are laid out in terms of getting in and out of the neighborhoods? Are they a total grid system like they are down in the, the traditional older downtown part of the city? That's a very good grid system down there, good connectivity for all modes of travel. As you go to the west, you get into what, there's a heart of unincorporated piece of the city that a lot of streets are discontinuous. And so, much of the burden relies on, oh, I shouldn't say burden, I guess, in Pasco. That has a double meaning. Sorry about that. But much of the, the demand is on just a few corridors in that part of town. So, it tends to increase volumes and increase conflicts on those routes. So, the same can be true said up in the north of the 182 corridor. Again, some of the, the styles of the new neighborhoods up there are less connected than their kind of older, older kin on the other part of town. And those are, so the questions we're raising, is that the style that you want to carry forward? Or do you want to look at something different? We've got some rationale for doing that, so we'll bring those to your attention. Next slide, please. So, this is a snapshot of one of the feedback forms from the online survey. So, the way that survey worked is people could zoom and pan around the city and drop a little icon. In this case, the map, they're showing those little orange dots that you see. I kind of like the one in the middle of the crop circle. I'm not quite sure what that's telling me. But generally, what this should be telling you is where, where people have what we call connectivity issues. They can't get to where they want to get to in a convenient and direct way. You see cluster, the clusters of them in and around Road 68, and generally, north of 182. And to us, that's a symptom of connectivity issues that, that hopefully can be addressed through this process. Next slide, please. I find that planning of this scale is not very, it doesn't, it isn't very satisfying for me as a planner unless we discuss the funding solutions. This one thing to have, a long-range plan, a 2025-year plan, but if the city doesn't have comfort in terms of how they can deliver the important parts of that plan, then I think we, we as consultant staff have really failed you. So, funding breaks down in these three categories. It's predominantly paid for through the city funds and through private development in cases. We do have the state chipping in, and we have intentionally included our local partners there, WashDOT, to help them see some of the issues we're seeing at the interchanges. And, and I know going through this process, they don't make commitments of any sort about addressing them. But what I want to hear from them is, yes, we agree that that's an issue. That's what I want to hear from them. And we can sort out how it gets addressed and who pays for how much later. But it's important for them to agree with the need at this level. So, I think that, I thought I want to call that to your attention, because you've got several interchanges on 182 there. You're going to definitely need some improvements over time. Next slide, please. Oh, the question slide. So, that was a quick overview, and I'll, I'll certainly agree to that. But I didn't want to, I didn't want to take up your time. I wanted to give you a flavor for the work we've been doing. We frankly have enjoyed working with your staff. They've been great, very helpful for us. I personally have done a lot of these studies, and so, I can say that with some perspective. You know, I've probably done 50 citywide transportation studies in my career. So, I'm looking really, really looking forward to the outcomes of this study, because I think you've got a group that's got motivation and insight about doing something that's going to be meaningful for the City of Pasco. So, let me stop there and answer any questions that you might have.
Well, thank you very much for that report. Council, anybody have any questions or comments?
This is Councilmember Maloney.
Go ahead, Craig.
Go ahead. Just start with Mr. Maloney.
Thank you. So, my question actually is more directed towards, perhaps Mr. White would be better suited to answer this. But I was wondering if someone on staff could help refresh us as to how this plan sits in within the comprehensive plan that we're working on and will be in front of council, hopefully, in the coming months.
I'll be glad to answer that, Mr. Maloney, and maybe Mr. Springer can, can pitch in if he, if he feels the need. But this has been a close, closely coordinated effort with DKS. And they, they are, they have been intimately apprised of our land use scenarios with their comprehensive plan. I also wanted to point out that the street connectivity issue is something that the Planning Commission has considered now, I think, since November of 2019. And we expect the Planning Commission to offer a recommendation. If I'm not mistaken, it's at the August Planning Commission meeting, and that will be coming to council workshop for discussion. So, yes, very closely coordinated. I'm going to say in step with the DKS effort to comprehensive plan process. And then if Mr. Springer or Mr. Ford has anything to add, I'd be more than happy to defer to them.
All I can say is I agree. We're using the same set of land use assumptions. So, the outcomes should not be different than what you're seeing in terms of the forecast. I think our, our focus is on kind of the complete street solution. So, sure, we're going to have improvement plans for the roads, and we're going to have improvement plans for bike ways and pedestrian ways. But what's important for us is how does this all work as a system? How can people get where they need to get to conveniently, safely, in the way they want to get there? And those are questions that really, you got to kind of dive down a little bit and talk to the individual public and see how they experience the system. It's much more than just a technical exercise. So, I agree, we're, we're at least using the same assumptions going forward. So, we shouldn't come up with radically different outcomes. That's for sure.
Great. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I understood it, and the public at large understood exactly how our different planning efforts come together. I know it's been something that we've talked about since I've joined councils, the importance of these good master plans, all well-integrated. So, when we, we're talking budget, or we're talking changes, we know in what context that everything is functioning together and that what, what the change in one piece means for the rest of it. So, really appreciate the insight. Thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney. Mr. Alvarado?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I had a question as, as, I guess, in the, in the theme of assumptions. I know that WashDOT has been changing a lot of their tone of what they're willing and able to fund as they are broke. Just curious to see if perhaps there's been kind of some, some information that the city has gotten from WashDOT as far as what we can expect and what that could look like going forward, and how that would impact our plans.
Yeah, Councilmember Alvarado, you know, I have been meeting with local WashDOT group on a regular basis, on a monthly basis, as a matter of fact, and try, for some time now, trying to emphasize some of our transportation plan issues associated with Road 68, Road 100, SR 12, and the at-grade crossings in that area. They have been very helpful and very supportive. Of course, with the online meeting situation, it's almost been more difficult to kind of move forward. But we are all anxiously waiting, I guess, as it were, for the completion of this plan so that we can then kind of present that and present what we've found and try to work together to come up with some solutions and actually put some dollar amounts on those solutions and how much participation we're anticipating or hoping for. One of the things that I did want to mention, you know, throughout this, is, is DKS's involvement. And, and not only involvement locally with city staff, but also with the regional jurisdictions and controlling agencies as well. I know that we are one of the, one of the first ones to put a comprehensive plan together of this magnitude, considering all the multimodal aspects that we've really focused on. I know the bicycling community has been very supportive and very encouraging with our efforts. Also, Betty Franklin Council Governments has also been very helpful, and we coordinated with them not only to improve the information we have, but also to make modifications and/or suggestions to the models that they have moving forward so that we're all working together to get that final product. And as Director White also mentioned, working for the, the other areas, the other studies, not only in the urban areas there, but also Road 100. I know that for council and, and for staff, that is a, is going to be a hotbed development. And I can, I can assure you that DKS has been very hopeful in providing information on a constant basis as to how we can even deal with the things that we're facing currently and how we can provide connectivity and, and advice and support for those developments. So, just wanted to share that a little bit. Hopefully, that helps a bit.
Thank you. That does. Yeah, I think that there's a sense that WashDOT really wants to switch their, the way that they fund projects by those that are well-voted and well-thought-out and have multimodal and various solutions that are more, well-thought-out and a little bit more, I guess, engineered. And so, it's good that we're doing this. So, I appreciate that.
Yeah, I think, I think part of that communication and exchange was evident with the Sacagawea Road Trail that we worked with, WashDOT, to put together a plan and some funding considerations for that. And so, we'll continue to, to work in that direction.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Alvarado. Any other council member have any comments or questions? All right. Well, thank you for, for those questions and comments. Thank you, Mr. Springer, for the work you're doing and working with the City of Pasco and staff for all the things you do to make it manageable and looking forward to the results of the master plan so that we can utilize it in the future. So, thank you very much for that. Next, we're going to go to the 2020 Pavement Preservation Program. Mr. Worley, how you doing tonight?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I'm doing great, thank you. And good evening, members of council. Can y'all hear me okay?
We, I can.
Yeah.
Okay. Great. Well, tonight, we're going to talk about a real quick overview of our 2020 Pavement Preservation Program. And I'm assuming that the slides will come up here shortly? You all got a copy of it in your packet?
Yes.
There you go. All right. To start with, now, I realize that pavement preservation is a very exciting subject, and you guys are probably riveted in your chairs till the end of this. And so, I'm going to try to, if I go too fast and you want more technical information, slow me down, ask lots of questions. I'd be happy to answer them. But tonight, we're going to do an overview real quick to kind of give you an idea of what exactly pavement preservation involves. We're going to talk about the budget for this year and the different programs we're proposing for pavement preservation. And then we're going to show you the 2020 projects we've identified. And then we're going to talk a little bit about how we're going to do pavement condition assessment in the future. And then I'll summarize everything as well. So, if we could go to the next slide, please, and we'll start with the overview. So, the question is, what is preservation, pavement preservation? Well, the idea of pavement preservation is to do, is to provide a proactive maintenance of the roads. And the idea here is that we want to do low-cost work on our roads to prevent the roads from deteriorating to a point where they reach a condition where some kind of major rehabilitation or major reconstruction is necessary. Because it's been known for a long time in this field that preventative maintenance costs are far less costly than replacing the roads. Next slide, please. So, to give you a little bit of background on what pavement preservation is, you may have heard of a, of letters called PCI, stands for Pavement Condition Index. And basically, this is a numerical rating that shows the condition of the pavement. And what it does is it starts with a, every road starts with a numerical value of 100. And then what people do is they walk the road, or they scan it, and they evaluate what kinds of distresses are on that road and how extensive and severe are those distresses. And some of those distresses are listed here as alligator cracking, longitudinal cracking of the pavement, transverse cracking, patching, and a ride factor. And each one of those has a different deduction. So, as a road has more alligator cracking, we reduce the 100 score down lower. If it has a lot of patching on it, then we add additional deductions. And eventually, once you have deducted all of the different distresses off of that pavement, you get an overall pavement condition index. And you can see in the table there that the range of PCI scores kind of tell you whether your road is in excellent condition, good, fair, poor, or fail. And so, obviously, we would like all of our roads to be in good to excellent condition. So, if we have an overall pavement condition index of 75 or above, we're doing really well. And you can see that depending on the condition of the roadway, there's a generalized treatment strategy. And I see the, not the tragedy, but it would be the strategy of... And I see the, not the tragedy, but it would be the strategy of, the title on that table missed an S. And so let me show you a little bit what some of these distresses look like. If we can go to the next slide. So here in the picture on the left, you can see that that's an example of alligator cracking. And typically, that indicates that the rock base underneath it has failed. The compaction of it, water probably got into it, there's not enough rock under it, and basically, the pavement has just deteriorated to that level. And you really can't do anything with alligator cracking other than remove it and replace it. So the other slide is an example of some longitudinal and some transverse cracking. And so the longitudinal are the ones that are gonna go down the length of the roadway. And the transverse, obviously, are the ones that go across where the traffic drives. And you can see that in this picture. Now, there's another term that you see under that picture, and it's called surface rattling. And so what that is, is the portion of the asphalt is actually coming out from between all of the rocks that are in the asphalt. And that's another type of distress that we see in pavement. Next slide, please. These are a couple other examples of streets in Pasco. You can see that some of the delamination, where there might have been an overlay on a road previously and it looked like it was a thin overlay, and parts of it have come off. It is separated from the asphalt underneath it. And then the one on the right is an example of some of the patching work. So when you have utility work or repairs to sewer water, stormwater, these are the type of patching that you will get. And those patches end up reducing the life of a pavement. And that's why we deduct that type of patch from the total score of the roadway. Next slide, please. Here is an example of some inventory street forms that were done back in 2017 and 2018. I don't know if you can see those real well, but you can see there's information about each of the different streets. And then you can see the distresses down in the table at the bottom. And what the scoring person does is they walk the roadway and they identify how severe each of those different distresses are and to what level it covers the roadway. And it takes that number and it deducts it off of 100. And then it looks at the rideability of the roadway, too. So on the first one on the left, you can see that the rating of that roadway is down around 40.5. And so that's a pretty low score for a road. That's not a good road condition. The second one over there is, has a rating of 90.25. That's a pretty good condition roadway. That's not one we're gonna focus on too much at this time. But that other one is one that looks like it's gonna need some attention. So I just wanted to be able to show you how detailed some of the information that we collect related to our street preservation program.
See, this is Councilmember Roach, and I just had a quick question for you before you moved on. And it was about the, just about the type of cracking. Does it, does it require additional draining if you have a certain type of alligator cracking versus longitudinal cracking in the pavement? Does that also create, I don't know, pooling of water that further damages the pavement?
It can. What you'll see, Councilmember Roach, is that when you have cracking, like longitudinal or transverse, we typically like to seal those with an asphalt emulsion crack seal material. And the idea is, the worst thing for a roadway is to get water underneath the asphalt. So we wanna seal it as much as we can. When you get alligator cracking, that means that water has gotten under it to the point where traffic going over it has caused that pavement to fail. And you can't really crack seal it because alligator cracks are all over the place. So you basically have to pull the asphalt up and then recompact the rock underneath it and then pave a patch back over it. So you do, you could get some low spots relative to alligator cracking because the rock beneath it has failed and so it will be lower in elevation and collect water. Did that answer your question?
That does answer my question. Thank you.
Great. Next slide, please. So this is a very important aspect of pavement preservation, and this is called the deterioration curve. Now, this is a representation of a deterioration curve. Every location in the United States will have a different deterioration curve because of the weather and the winters that they have. So this is just a representation. This may not be exactly what fits our area. But the intent of this is to show people that when you have a very good road, let's say you paved a brand-new road and you have a PCI score of 100. As the pavement ages, which is on the X-axis, you're, you can go many, many years along that curve before you drop from a score of 100 to a score of 80. And so not a whole lot of work needs to be done on that roadway. But as you get older and older, you'll notice that the curve steepens and it starts dropping faster. So once you start getting down into the 60 PCI score range, all of a sudden, the amount of deterioration starts accelerating. And so the idea for pavement preservation is to try to keep the roadways at the higher level through treatment methods that are a lot less costly. Because if we can prevent the score of the road or the road condition to drop to a level that's 40 or below, it's gonna be a lot cheaper for us to maintain that roadway. You can see, as soon as we get down below 40, boy, it's just in a couple of years that you are just down into replacing that roadway completely. So wanted you to be able to understand how we, as engineers, look at asphalt paved roads, even concrete paved roads. And we use this information to determine what's the best treatment, depending on the condition of the roadway. Next slide, please. So here are some examples of the treatment methods. And we're gonna start with the easiest to the most complicated. So the first treatment method is crack sealing. You guys have seen this all over, councilmembers have seen this all over town. Our crews are out there doing it all the time. And as I mentioned earlier, water is the worst thing to get in the roadway. So our crews are out there and they are filling the cracks with this asphalt material so that the water stays on top of the road surface and not underneath it. Next slide, please. A fog seal is a type of asphalt emulsion that they call it. It's basically a thin liquid oil that they put over the roadway. And the idea here is, over time, the sun and the snow and the salts and the oils all have a tendency to oxidize the surface of the roadway. And the more oxidized the roadway surface becomes, the more rattling and deterioration it starts to see. So sometimes what we'll do is we'll go in and we'll place this thin layer of oil over the top of the roadway to rejuvenate it a little bit, to keep it from deteriorating faster. It's a pretty inexpensive way to preserve a roadway. But this is something you do when the score is still pretty high. Some agencies do the fog seals right after, or three years after, the pavement is brand-new. So it's a very early-on treatment. Next slide, please. The next is a slurry seal. And this is similar, except that the asphalt emulsion has very small aggregate in it. And so it's a little thicker layer of covering over the existing roadway. And this helps seal the road, provides a new wearing surface for the cars. And so this will add quite a few years of additional life to a roadway that is starting to deteriorate. Next slide, please. Now, we're starting to get into thicker and thicker types of treatments. And so a micro-surfacing is very similar, except it's thicker and it has larger rock in it. And you might use this kind of surfacing when the score of your road is starting to go downward and the surface of the existing road is getting worse and worse. So you might wanna put a micro-surface over the top of the roadway to give it extra life to that pavement surface. Next slide, please. Another method that you've seen around the area is something called chip seal. And in this particular treatment method, what they do is they spray a layer of oil on the roadway and then they cover that oil with rock chips. It's very small rock that's been ground up and it creates a new surface of the roadway that the tires drive over and it, what we call it's a new wearing course. And it helps seal the road, covers the cracks, and you're basically providing a new surface. It's very durable. The one problem with chip seals is they're not very good treatments for residential areas or even in urban areas. Bicycles, skateboarders, that kinda stuff, it's not a good surface. This is the kind of thing you wanna do out in rural areas or on roadways that have maybe high-traffic volume, but not a lot of pedestrian or bicycle volume. Next slide, please. And one of the last things we can do is an overlay. And this is one where you'll do either one and a half to two inches thick of brand-new asphalt right over the top of the existing road. Most of you have seen, we did an overlay on 20th, 20th Street, I think, Court, 20th Avenue, between Court Street and the freeway. And basically, you're just overlaying right over the top of the existing roadway. A lot of times, what you'll do is you'll go cut out any bad sections of roadway, patch it, crack seal it, and then pave over it. And this type of preservation treatment will provide many years of added life to the roadway, on the order of 10 to 12 years of additional life for that roadway. Next slide, please. And then, if your road is in such bad condition that it doesn't make any sense to overlay it because you would be putting overlay material on top of a very poor roadway, then the only other option is to actually reconstruct the roadway. And in that case, you pull up the old asphalt, you might even pull up some of the base rock that's underneath it, and then you just regrade it, you recompact it, you put the rock back, you put the asphalt back over it. And that's the most expensive option. This is the thing that we're trying to prevent. We like to use all the other treatment types so that we don't have to get to this point because this is the most expensive. Next slide, please. So that's the overview. Let's talk about the budget and the programs for this year. So real quickly, next slide, please. Our budget for 2020 is about $1.8 million. And as councilmembers know, a lot of the money for the preservation program comes from the overlay fund, which is part of the utility tax that is collected for all the utilities within Pasco. And we have taken that money and we have divided it up into two programs. One program is called the ordinary maintenance program, where we will do a lot of the preservation work in, with our in-house staff. So we'll rent the equipment, we'll do the overlay, we'll do the paving, we'll do the patching, crack sealing, that kinda stuff. And so our goal this year is to spend about $740,000 of overlay money for the ordinary maintenance side of the pavement preservation program. The remainder of the budget is gonna go towards capital projects. And these are ones that are large enough that we would rather bid these projects out because contractors then provide traffic control and can get a lot of work done with equipment that they've got that we don't have available to us. Next slide, please. So let's go into the 2020 projects. So for our ordinary maintenance program, these are the three streets we are planning to do this year. You can see the engineers' estimates for those streets. I think that's pretty self-explanatory. These are ones that our streets department have identified as ones that probably need the most attention. Next slide, please. These are pictures of what those roads look like. You can see that we've got longitudinal cracking, we've got transverse cracking, we've got patches all over the place. So these are ones that are gonna get taken care of this year by our in-house staff, by our operations folks. Next slide, please. The capital projects that we're gonna do with the remainder of the funding are Court Street and Industrial Way. And you can see the engineers' estimates on those projects right there. Next slide, please. Court Street, you can see the map there showing the location that we're proposing from North 32nd to Road 44. And there's a picture there of the condition of the roadway. Now, a lot of times, after you've crack sealed for years and years, you get to a point where the condition of the road has gotten to the point where, okay, now it's time for an overlay. And this portion of Court Street, we have determined, is ready for an overlay now. Next slide, please. Industrial Way is a project where we are combining a stormwater retrofit project with a pavement preservation project. The condition of the road, as you can see in the pictures, are pretty bad. It looks like there's been a thin overlay along the way and it's delaminated. Some of that could be related to the fact that we've got some stormwater facilities out there that appear to have failed. And so we're gonna, as part of our capital improvement program, have identified a stormwater project to go fix the stormwater. And then we're gonna do the pavement preservation at the same time so that we're doing both within the same roadway at the same time and impacting, minimizing our impacts to the businesses out here. Next slide, please. So what does this mean for the future? Well, it's, I'm glad to share with you that we currently are under contract with a company called IMS, which is Infrastructure Management Services. And this is a company that has equipment, laser equipment, that are mounted on trucks and cars that they can just drive all of the streets within the city and provide all of the pavement condition index information to us. And there's a sample of what the image looks like in the center of this slide. And rather than having people go walk the streets and do it by hand and by visual inspection, we actually let the computers and the lasers do all the measurements and do all the calculations. And then they are able to map that information and provide us a map showing where all of the roads are that have certain PCI scores. So if we've got a lot of green streets on our map, that means that we've got a lot of streets that are in pretty good condition. If we've got a lot of red streets shown on the map, that means we've got a lot of streets that need attention. So we're excited to be able to have this opportunity to have IMS come in and score all of the city's streets. And they're, I think they're gonna get started right about September this year. So we're excited about that. And we'll be bringing some more of this information to you to show you the difference. Next slide, please. This is some of the information that comes from the software that the IMS company uses after they've done the scoring. We get to input a lot of information about what goes into the program. And then the program analyzes it and tells us, okay, here are the treatment options for each of the roads based on the distresses that the lasers had picked up on each one of them. So it's a much more sophisticated and much more detailed way for us to manage our pavement preservation program. So we're really looking forward to it. I've used this program before. We've, I've seen this in other cities and it is very, very helpful. Next slide, please. So in summary. Next slide. We have two programs, ordinary maintenance. Well, we've got three locations that we'll do for about $740,000. We've got two locations identified that we'll put out the bid as a capital project for just over $1 million. And starting next year, we will have automated data that will give us a better idea of where our overall street conditions are within the city and have a much better handle on where we need to go with our pavement preservation program. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
You know, Mr. Worley, this is really one of the exciting reports that, because I'm interested in roads and understand the importance of maintaining them. And we can see by the cost of the ones that are going bad, how important it is to preserve our roads. And I just have one quick question. On that slide... And I just have one quick question. On that slide where you showed the van that would go around and all the green are relatively good roads, is that Pasco, is that our, is that Pasco there?
No.
Oh, I was going to say, so, so they're going to come out in September or whenever to, to start that work, is that correct?
That is correct, yeah. That, that's a sample that they took of another city, just to show how the software would look.
I'm really interested in seeing that come together because I got to tell you, I've been in cities where the roads are absolutely just worn, and I don't know how those cities are going to recover from, from so many roads that are, that are bad. And I hope, I hope that, I know that with the maintenance that we've been doing, I can't imagine it's going to, I'm hoping for a lot of green on, on our map when we get it too. So anyway, very interesting, and never thought I would know this much about pavement. It's a very good report. Any other council members have any questions or comments?
Councilmember Alvarado?
Mr. Alvarado, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you so much, Mr. Worley, for that presentation. That's a very, yeah, like our mayor said, that there's definitely a lot of information that we don't often think about, but we use it every day. And so we're, we're definitely, it's also really great to see that, you know, we're joining the 21st century and using technology that, you know, can save a lot of staff time, but also can give us very accurate data. My, my question to you is, how are, do we use any other data points to prioritize repair, be it level of use, things of that nature, or is it solely the actual condition of the road?
We use the condition of the road as a guide. In other words, once this information comes to us, we will certainly take a look at it, but it doesn't replace the other aspects that go into the decision-making process. So there may be issues that we know about as staff or as council members that, you know, the pavement preservation program doesn't know about. So for example, we might know that in a couple of years, there's going to be a, the BFCG might put out a call for federally funded projects. And one of the directions, and Councilmember Alvarado, you know that one of the directions that WashDot is going, and sometimes the FHWA is putting more money into preserving the infrastructure that we currently have, rather than funding new infrastructure. And so there's going to be more federal funds come to the region that are going to help pay for preservation projects. And it's this kind of system that is going to help us be able to get some of those federal funds because we will have a very scientific way of identifying the conditions of our streets. And we'll be able to meet the criteria necessary to apply for those federal funds. So yes, there are other things that we do take into consideration. It may also be a situation where the, the program will say, you've got a lot of work to do, and we just may not have all the funds yet to do it. So we're going to have to get pretty creative on how we approach it. So this is basically just a tool for us to make decisions.
Thank you. Just a follow-up question. The, the actual data, or perhaps even the map that, that we see a sample of, is that something that would be able to be used by the public or available to the public?
Absolutely. As a matter of fact, it's all GIS-based. And so we could load it onto our website, and then anybody who wants to look at it can certainly log in and, and look under our GIS system. Perfect.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarado. Any other comments or questions?
This is Councilmember Roach.
Yes, Mrs. Roach.
Yes, I had one question, one comment. Mr. Worley, you said one of the oxidation factors was sunlight, and that's something that we definitely have to contend with here in three cities. But I wanted to know if there were materials or technology to reduce that sunlight oxidation on roadways?
There really, there's nothing that I'm aware of. The oils that we use in asphalt mixes are, they are what they are. They're the same oil mixtures that everybody uses. And so, you know, they, they all oxidize. The more sunnier places that you go, the, the more oxidation you're going to get. Sometimes you can reduce the oxidation a little bit based on the type of aggregate that you put in the asphalt mix. The problem is, is you use the aggregate that's available as a local resource. So we use what's available to us here, and we do the best we can. And if we start seeing severe oxidation, then one of the treatment methods that we could consider would be to do the fog seal or the slurry seals.
Thank you. That's helpful information. And the, the comment that I had was, you know, something that wasn't covered in, in this presentation, but in my Public Works tour, my part one of that tour, I got to see some of, some of the employees down at work in downtown Pasco scoring the, the painted lines on the pavement and then using a new technology that we haven't had before with a new paint and then glass beads that are melted and then applied on to the top of it. And I just wanted to say, as somebody who, you know, my, my mom has glaucoma. And so my awareness of just visibility because of her condition makes me really grateful that we're doing that and that we're using that technology for a person like that who's still on the roads driving, even though she shouldn't be at night. But that just helps our drivers in town. And then, you know, as well as what I learned, which is that the longevity of that material lasts much longer years compared to a year.
Which is what you would normally get with just paint. Yes, you are correct.
Well, thank you for the presentation. I appreciate it.
You bet.
Thank you, Councilwoman Roach. Anybody else?
It's Councilman Maloney. Just briefly, Mr. Worley. I've seen and heard about some various alternatives and new, new technologies for what sort of material, different roads and can be made out of. I don't think there's, I'm not asking you to put you on the spot for right this conversation, but would you mind following up with a brief summary via email of kind of what some of those, some of those things are? If any exploration's been done on, on some of those? I don't know much about them, but of course, you know, everything you read about them is always the next best thing. And here, and we're still using some, I'd say some, some pretty old technology for, for pavement services. So just curious about that information.
You bet. I can, I can certainly follow up. And, and you are correct in noting that a lot of times we get presentations on it, and it all sounds great and wonderful. And I have been involved in situations where that kind of situation came along, and they said, well, let's do a test strip for you. And then it turns out that they couldn't even get their equipment to work in order to get the product out onto the street. And so sometimes things don't go as well with the newer products that they claim.
Absolutely. And I'm certainly not advocating for any one or any particular change. I'm, I'm just curious of what that, what that future looks like a little bit. If you don't, if, if you have an opportunity to indulge me sometime when you have some free time.
I certainly will.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney. And thank you, Mr. Worley, for that report. I'll, I'll give one more opportunity for anybody else if you have a comment or question. Okay, well, thank you very much for that. That was very educational and very, very good report. I appreciate that, Mr. Worley. So next, we go, we'll go to the last report or presentation, follow-up to the PMC 9.105 Authorized Camping Infractions and U.S. Court of Appeals for Ninth Circuit case. And I do believe Mr. Eric Ferguson is on the line. Are you here tonight?
That's great, Your Honor. Are you here? Can you hear me?
Ooh, that sounded really good. Your Honor.
Well, you know, it's funny, I've been reading all these cases, and it must just have come back to me.
Well, thank you and good evening, Mr. Ferguson. Thank you for joining us tonight. And go ahead with your presentation, please.
Great, thank you. No, I appreciate it. Appreciate the opportunity to chat about this. There were some questions apparently that came up a couple of weeks ago when Craig Briggs in our office was, with you guys. And so we wanted to follow up and get a little, see if we could drill down a little bit and get some more information out to folks about some of the issues related to our unauthorized camping and how those specifically relate to the, the most recent, I guess, version of the Martin v. Boise case, which is a Ninth Circuit case that has had quite a, caused quite the stir. So I'll just, I'll just give you a few overview items that I would like to focus on. And then we'll go into a little bit more of the specifics. And then hopefully, or we'll be able to talk about the ordinance and then hopefully be able to answer any questions you might have at the end. A few things I wanted to just kind of say at the outset with regard to this decision is that it really is, it's not often that you get a decision that's not only this kind of far-reaching, but also this controversial. Far-reaching in the sense that it truly affects all local governments in the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals. That is a huge portion of the United States. So the Ninth Circuit is disproportionately large compared to some of the other circuits in terms of population with the West Coast. They don't change the circuits very often. So there's literally millions and millions of people who are affected by this decision. The decision is also one of the probably most technical decisions. It's, it's pretty narrow in its holding, but it does go through some pretty steep legal gymnastics to kind of get to where it ends up. And I'll be completely frank and tell you that I hadn't seen some of these concepts since the bar exam about fifteen years ago. So it was, it was pretty, it was pretty exhilarating to try to get through some of those. The third thing I would also want to just kind of remind people is that it is extremely, as, you know, this is telling you something you already know, but it is extremely controversial. And I'll, I'll kind of, when I go through kind of the, the overview of how the case got to where it eventually ended up, I think it'll be pretty clear how controversial it is that even the Ninth Circuit itself went to extraordinary lengths to essentially battle it out to come up with the decision that they ended up coming up with. And then the other thing too is that it is, it's one of the, the few decisions, while it is very narrow, it is one of the few decisions that is probably the most misunderstood that I've recently come across. It's misquoted constantly, and it is misapplied, I think, on a consistent basis. There are several things that it does not do. It does not allow people to sleep anywhere. It does not allow people to sleep in parks necessarily. It does not require cities to provide shelter or encampments. And I remember when it first came out, we were getting phone calls about when we were going to be setting up restrooms and which, which park we were going to put aside for our encampment. There were several things that really kind of got, kind of took off on their own and eventually were able to kind of bring it back down to earth. But the one thing I think it is clear that it does do is that it does require cities to not criminalize or cite through, or cite people through, through criminal citations for sleeping in public anywhere in the city. I'll read you just a brief little quote that it, that I think summarizes it best about the narrowness of the holding, but as written by Justice Burzon. "The city is quite right," in referring to Boise, "the city of Boise, the city's quite right about the limited nature of the opinion. On the merits, the opinion holds only that municipal ordinances that criminalize sleeping, sitting, or lying in all public spaces when no alternative sleeping space is available violate the Eighth Amendment. Nothing in the opinion reaches beyond criminalizing the biological essential need to sleep when there is no available shelter." So that's, that is pretty narrow. And, but at the same time also, as we go through, I'll, I think it'll be clear that it's pretty controversial as well. So just a little bit of background, it was a city of Boise ordinance that was pretty broad. It banned many things, camping in a lot of forms. But specifically, the problem was is that it actually banned the act of sleeping in, in, in any right-of-way, in any park, on any public property. So it was pretty broad. The, the plaintiff sued under several theories. The, the biggest theory that they tried to put forward was the fact that the ordinance was a violation of the Eighth Amendment, the U.S. Constitution's Eighth Amendment against cruel and unusual punishment. The, they also sued under Section 1983 for damages claims related to some of the dismissals that some of the parties had received through these citations, as well as also they sought declaratory and injunctive relief, which is just a fancy way of saying, try to find a way to make sure that the ordinance couldn't be enforced prospectively. So they were kind of looking back and looking forward at the same time. At the end of the day, the majority ruled that the Eighth Amendment did apply, that it would be a cruel, unusual punishment to have a ordinance on the books that penalized folks for a, what is referred to many different ways in the opinion, but essentially a basic human function of sleeping. And so that you couldn't make that a, you couldn't prosecute somebody for, for that because they had no other place to do that. They also ruled that some of the retrospective claims could, could move forward under 1983, and then also some of the prospective claims as well. The, the part that I was referring to earlier about the controversial nature of it really is evident when you see kind of what the process, procedural history that it went through. This case was in U.S. District Court out of Boise, and then was referred to, what is referred to as a panel, a Ninth Circuit panel, a three-judge panel. And they are, the Idaho, they, their three-judge panel is out of Portland. And then the, the actual Ninth Circuit is based in San Francisco, essentially their home base, but they have satellites essentially in locations around the Ninth Circuit, one of which is in Portland, which is where this case was referred to. I only tell you all of that because that actually turned out to be pretty important because that three-judge panel is the one that wrote the decision and came to the, these conclusions and, and came up with this, these legal arguments. Subsequently, and what happens or can happen is a, an appellate can petition to have the case heard, what we call en banc, which is, again, just a fancy way for saying the whole, the whole panel. So they petitioned to have the whole panel down in San Francisco hear the case. And subsequently, that motion, all the judges get to vote, I believe there's fourteen judges in the Ninth Circuit toll. They vote and decide whether they want to hear the case or not. And that's only interesting in the sense that in this particular case, they declined to grant the en banc hearing. So what that meant was is that the three-judge panel out of Portland, their decision became the law of the case. And so that was the binding case law. And so the controversy comes in because after that failure of the motion to hear the case en banc, the two judges took the extraordinary steps of drafting what we refer to as dissents to the mo, dissents to the refusal to hear the case en banc. And so you had two judges who went to great lengths to essentially lay out their reasons for why not only the, the court should have reheard the case, but why the three-judge panel out of Portland was wrong. So they really laid out a pretty precise route that they felt that the case went wrong and should be overturned on. That notwithstanding, the, the next step was to forward it on to the U.S. Supreme Court, which everybody was pretty, pretty sure was going to be heard by the U.S. Supreme Court. And then a lot of folks felt that because this was, well, let's just say, an innovative use of some of the, the legal doctrines, thought that they would take that up and it would be addressed. And a lot of folks felt that it would be overturned. Surprised everybody in that the U.S. Supreme Court declined, they did not grant certiorari, which is the ability for, to be able to have the case heard at the U.S. Supreme Court. Nobody really knows why. They, they decided not to hear the case without comment. And what that meant was that nobody knows why they didn't hear it. So regardless, they didn't hear the case. So the, the law of the land in the Ninth Circuit, which includes us, is the, the three-judge panel out of Portland. So that opinion was modified just a little bit when they went through the secondary process. But for the most part, it's process, but for the most part, it's the same opinion. So it is binding on us. So it, it is interesting from a kind of a procedural standpoint, kind of how all the steps it's gone through. It does conflict with a lot of other decisions in other circuits. So, which is why I think a lot of folks felt that it would be something the Supreme Court would move forward on. They didn't do that. So we have several splits between the Ninth Circuit and other circuits based on some of these, the legal doctrines that they used to come to the conclusion. Long and short of it is, it's, it's the, it's the law of the land right now. How long it'll last, nobody knows. It could be, it could be the beginning of a change in all the circuits. And if the Supreme Court ever confirms the legal analysis, it could become the law of the United States. So, but right now, we know that it applies to us, so we need to make sure that we're in good stead with that. And so then that's where the questions have come up related to our unauthorized camping statute or our PMC, excuse me. And with related to that, I think the, the one way, just kind of tying back to one of the things I said initially, one of the things that has been misquoted and misunderstood about this decision more than anything is that it does not outlaw camping statutes. It does not, it does not make those moot. Camping, it depends on how the camping is defined in the, in the ordinance. That's clear. And where Boise seemed to have gotten in trouble is that they really focused, their camping ordinance really focused on the idea that folks weren't allowed to sleep. That was part of the definition of what they called camping. So we'll go through our ordinance just real quick here and then I think you'll see pretty quick that we're in a little different situation than Boise was. Looking real quick at our Chapter 9, 105, unauthorized camping, the, starting just from the beginning, the purpose is, is helpful because it really lays out what the, the goal of the ordinance is. And that really helps with any kind of contest to the statute or to the, to the ordinance because it makes it clear that the reason for this particular ordinance isn't to rid the city of homeless, it's for public health, safety, and general welfare and the general health and well-being of the city. So that's very helpful because that makes it clear what the, what the purpose of the ordinance is. Then we go through and kind of lay out the definitions and normally those are pretty boring and nobody pays attention to them except in situations like this where they really become the, the bread and butter of the ordinance in the sense that we define camp as, and I'll read this to you just so that you can kind of see the distinction, means to pitch, erect, or occupy camp facilities, or to use camp paraphernalia, or both, for the purposes of, or in such a way as will permit remaining overnight, or for habitation, or temporary living quarters, or parking a trailer camper or other vehicle for purposes of remaining overnight, or for habitation, or temporary living quarters. So that's a little, just kind of keep that in the back of your mind, that definition. We also go on to define that camp facilities, what that could include tents and the like. And then camp paraphernalia is also interesting for our purposes because it describes and says includes, but is not limited to tarpaulins, cots, beds, sleeping bags, hammocks, or cooking facilities and similar equipment. Then it goes and defines park and streets, which are pretty much the, the things that we think of in terms of those, so I won't go through those. 030, 9105030 essentially breaks down what is unlawful. It says, "It shall be unlawful for any person to camp, occupy camp facilities, or use camp paraphernalia in any park or playfield owned by the city, or on any sidewalk, street, alley, lane, public right-of-way, or under bridge, viaduct, public space, general public, park designated areas." So, and I only focus on those because those two words, "any," really, they mean something in this particular set situation because that's really what the case focused on. We are in a different situation than Boise, even though we use those same words for a couple of reasons. The unauthorized storage is, that's a, that's pretty standard. There's not much that the case would really have affected with that. But then you'll see on the very bottom there, at the end of the ordinance, it talks about 9105050, where it talks about how the violation would be a class one infraction. If it happens again within 24-month period, then it's a misdemeanor. The part that's really important though is parin 2 there, where it talks about the law or code enforcement officers shall not enforce the unauthorized camping provisions of PMC 9105030 when no alternative accommodations are available. So that was really where they got in trouble in Boise is that they really didn't go through any analysis to determine, was there some other space available anywhere in the city? They had some, they alluded to certain ways, but the court, at the end of the day, decided that those weren't actual, real ways of determining whether space was available. So ours is pretty clear on what, what that would be defined as. And so it's pretty clear that if followed as written, that our unauthorized camping ordinance wouldn't be even in effect if, unless they could show that there was no alternative combination, the police wouldn't even enforce it at that point. One last thing I wanted to point to was that the, parin 3, it talks about prior to and in lieu of filing a notice of infraction, first-time offenders shall be issued a non-criminal notice, a copy of this chapter, and a resource list of community providers of housing, mental health, alcohol dependence, and drug addiction services. So that's also something that we can do. At the end of the day, I think what some of the questions were, and obviously I'm happy to chat about any questions that I have, but I think that the thing that really was key is that our ordinance does two things that, that I think keep us in or on the safe side of the Boise decision. The first is, we don't, we don't define camping as sleeping. Now, we do define camping as using, either to use, to occupy camp facilities or to use camp paraphernalia. We do then also, when we refer to camp paraphernalia, we get into this concept of beds and sleeping bag. Now that is starting to get a little, that is getting a little close to some of the points that were made in the decision that we would want to be careful with because that starts to sound like that's less about camping, that's more about sleeping. So that's, that is one particular issue. But I think we, at the outset, make it clear that we wouldn't even be enforcing this unless we could show that we had space available. So that would really, if we're following the letter of the law of the ordinance, then we shouldn't have any issues where someone using sleeping materials, a sleeping bag, or some kind of bedding would, would get us in trouble with regard to the holding. So, but then there's a, one last thing I wanted to just read to you so that it was clear. Sorry, let's see. Oh, the, the one thing I will say, it is kind of rare also that a footnote in a case becomes so controversial, but one of the things that really was clear in this case was that when the court stated, the original three-judge panel in Portland basically said that, you know, whether some other ordinance is consistent with the Eighth Amendment will depend, as here, on whether it punishes a person for lacking the means to live out the, quote, "universal and unavoidable consequences of being human in the way that this ordinance prescribes." So I think that's, that's very telling, but that is also going to be a little problematic moving forward because that is not going to be just limited, it's going to be hard to limit that to just sleeping. So how that plays out with regard to other laws that, that could potentially come under this analysis are to be determined. But there's, there's certainly valid concerns, I think, with related to ordinances related to public urination, other, other things that could fall under that, under that, that description. So that is one of the things that the, the sentence have gone to great lengths to emphasize could be problematic about this decision moving forward. So yeah, there's definitely going to be more to come on this. But with that, I'm happy to chat about any of the issues we have with the case or our particular ordinance.
Wow, Mr. Ferguson.
More than you ever want to know.
No, I thank you for that report. I have one question. In the section 105, 9.105.150 penalty for violation, it talks a little bit about, and you'd mentioned that there has to be accommodations for this individual or person with a community service facility has available vouchers that allow an individual or family experiencing homelessness to stay overnight. Is there anybody in staff or anybody that could tell me, how are we doing in Pasco with that? I mean, if somebody was to be experiencing and, and creating this issue, is it the county or the city, or how are we doing with a voucher or available space for an individual like this? Can anybody answer that?
Chief Rosky might have better data on that since they probably have more contacts with just basic homeless people. Most of the contacts fire hazard, some kind of medical issue with them. So I, Chief Rosky, are you on?
Chief Rosky, are you, are you on the line?
He must not be there. There isn't, that's one of the problems.
Mr. Funfar will be coming out to give a hand.
Yes, chief, you're unmuted on our end, but we cannot hear you.
There he is.
Maybe a connection issue, it looks like.
Okay, so I, I guess I was just curious to, to know how we were as far as available space in the event that an individual was to be camping and an officer or code enforcement or whoever was to confront this person. And that portion of the, the letter or the ordinance that talks about available vouchers to allow an individual or family experiencing homelessness to stay overnight. Mr. Rosky, do you know, can you hear me now? Are you there? Okay, you're still muted. We can't hear him.
There, I know that there are not a lot of spaces available and in some cases, people end up going to, we take them to hotels, I know PD has done that. They have some mechanism with some donated cards. As we do, we've had individuals in the past donate credit cards that we use, both for food and to get shelter for people that don't have anywhere to go, particularly in cases where we have real extreme weather, like we're going to see this week in, in the heat and in the winter when it's real cold. But many times, those people don't want to go indoors. It, it's just a fact, they, that's the lifestyle they prefer and it's difficult to get them to go to a hotel or, it's not, we can't just take them to the mission because the mission doesn't admit like that. They have a kind of a process on how they get people in. So it, there's some mechanism there, mayor, but it's not, we couldn't put a lot of people somewhere if we had to.
Okay. Thank you for that. All right, well, thank you, Mr. Ferguson. Council members, anybody have any questions or comments? Well, that was, you know, I, I appreciate your presentation, Mr. Ferguson. It was clear. I think, I think, you know, I, I think we're in a good spot for now. Thank God we're not Boise. And so if there's no further comments, I appreciate your report and thank you for educating us on this a little bit better and we can move forward. So thank you very much for that.
Great, my pleasure.
Okay. So with that, we're going to go to the next item on the miscellaneous council discussion. And I guess I will start, Mr. Chief Gear, do you have anything you want to share with miscellaneous?
No, I had nothing and Mr. Zabel had nothing he wanted to share with miscellaneous.
Okay. Well, I think, Mr. White, do you have any questions or anything you can help us out with on an application that was, that was provided earlier today?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and this is Rick White. And no, not, not in particular to the application, although I, as counsel is aware, I think Mr. Zabel sent an email earlier. The wrong tax, tax year was uploaded into the application, which kicked it back out. But just in general, much like Mr. Serrano reported with the Hanford Area Economic Investment Fund, there, it is a process, but there is funding available. The good news, couple of good news pieces, is the DPDA has hired an additional person to help process applications. As counsel, I think is aware, we have a little short, or a little shy of 250 applications now. And $115,000 is already out the door. That was a result of the Group Health Foundation's contribution to the DPDA. I also want to remind counsel that this is a brand-new program. We didn't have a business assistance program and HUD warned us very early in the CARES Act funding that we should not be creating new programs. However, we had to because, as I said, we don't have a business assistance program. So we had to create a new program and we're getting the bugs worked out. As a matter of fact, Angie Pittman, our block grant coordinator, I just noticed on her time card today, has spent 33 hours of overtime the past two weeks working with the two accountants processing the applications for the DPDA, trying to get this process underway and seamless. One, I think the first CARES Act funding went out the door today, if I'm not mistaken, and it'll be followed very, in very short order by two or four more this week. And now that we have a process in place, I think it'll be much easier to execute and get the, get the monies out the door. And, and I again, wanted to remind counsel that this is not a long program. It's, it's a grant. It's, it's free money essentially, except for the time involved in the application. There are a number of business practices that we're noticing with applicants that don't lend themselves to rapid processing of their applications. We're often missing financial reports and we're often asked to interpret accounting practices, which of course is very problematic in itself. But again, with what we have in place and the federal requirements, I think that we will be able to speed up the processing, at least with those applications that have integrated and uploaded the required federal information. And again, I know this was an item, an update item last week at the council workshop that, or meeting, but I would be glad to try to answer any questions counsel might have.
Well, thank you for that.
This is Councilwoman Roach.
We'll start with you, Councilmember Roach. Go ahead.
Well, am I correct in that we have had about 200 applications so far?
About 250, Councilwoman Roach.
And are most of those people, most of those business owners signaling that they have found this out through city council meetings or the city website? How are they being directed to DPDA?
Well, DPDA is the only qualified 501(c)(3) that we have that is able to process the applications. And candidly, I'm not certain how they're finding out about it. It's probably a combination of word of mouth, DPDA website, City of Pasco website, and the news media that's contributing to the number of applications.
Thank you. And I'm, I'm interested in knowing, I know that it's an ongoing process, but just interested in knowing, not who, but how many don't meet the qualifications that are needed to receive the grant. And so I think that would be a number that's helpful to me. Uh, receive the grant. And so I think that would be a number that's helpful to me. As we also learn how many people are applying. Um, and I don't know if that's something that we can request from D P D A or not. Is that something that we can?
Well, I, yes, you can, and as the process continues, we'll have better numbers, uh. But I believe if I'm remembering correctly, as of last Monday, um. Out of the applications being processed, we had sixty that simply simply were not eligible for the federal grants for a variety of reasons. Um, so it either had to do with length of time in business or not invalid Pasco business license. Or residency requirements, but as again, as we get more uh. As as we process and complete more applications, we'll be able to provide those numbers.
I think just something that occurred to me as I read some correspondence that uh a- about. Uh, this process or what businesses are are not getting um the grants. I think for a, from a transparency perspective, it would be great if D P D A could track. How many are, you know, how many are not getting them and then also. Uh, the reason why, did they, were they in excess of the minimum number of employees? Um, are they, did they not fill, you know, submit the correct tax uh return year, um? Or whatever the reason may be, but just something that maybe has some general categories because I think in. Uh, from our perspective as a city council, you know, being answering to the community about. Well, we didn't get anything and, you know, why was that? You have, you guys had a lot of money to distribute and our business didn't qualify. And so I think that helps. Um, in our communication with those business owners.
No, I, thank you, I understand and um. Again, with two hundred and fifty applications, uh, we we really don't have much money to distribute. I know it sounds like a lot, but we we don't. And if everybody takes the mid-range of the funding available. We're not gonna be able to fund anywhere close to, let's say. One hundred or two hundred of the estimated two hundred and fifty applications we now have. Unless there's further uh CARES Act relief money.
Director White, this is uh Mayor Portembarajas. A quick question, I'm not sure if you mentioned it, may have missed it. Out of the two hundred and fifty applications, how many have been approved?
Well, I I wish I could answer that with a short, simple answer, uh, Councilwoman Roach, um. And I'm going on memory now from last week, but uh if I'm not mistaken. There are approximately ten to fifteen that have been approved awaiting further documentation. Uh, as I mentioned, we're probably going to get one, two, or maybe four out the door prior to Thursday. Um, and I I can't specifically answer your question about how many have been approved. Because there's various stages of approval. You meet the initial uh criteria. Registered Pasco business, uh, residency requirements, and I can't remember what the other one is. And then there's another set of criteria you meet. And then there's, most of the applications are in some form of step one to step five.
Okay.
I know that's a roundabout way of answering it, but that's, I'm sorry, it's the best I can do right now.
No, that's fine, that's that's fine. And just another question, um, it's been brought to my attention. Um, that some people have already received uh funding. When they have submitted their application, so I guess there's a number issued out to the applicants. In order of receiving, um, so some people have received funding way before another person. Um, is this maybe because there's confusion over the the, where the funds are coming from? Is it the CARES Act or a different grant that is being issued?
Y- yes, it is. Yeah, uh, the. The Downtown Pasco Development Authority received uh roughly a hundred and twenty thousand dollars from Group Health. And that is not federal money, and we were able to get that out the door very rapidly. So they distributed, the D P D A distributed approximately a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars very quickly. So I think that's what you're hearing.
Okay, could be. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Sorry about that, Blanche. Uh, this is Councilmember Alvarado.
Go ahead, Mister Alvarado.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mister White, thank you uh for the update and certainly. Uh, it's a lot of steps for uh federal grants. We we know and we know that. It's a, it's a process anytime you're doing with uh federal funds. Uh, but um, can you perhaps uh elucidate a little bit for um listeners? The difference between first come, first served and first come, first eligible? I think that may be where some of the confusion may be and perhaps uh. That that could be a motivation for folks to get all their required uh documentation in quicker.
No, uh, it it, thank you, uh, Council, Councilman Alvarado, that's a good point. Um, essentially, it is first come, first served. However, if you do not meet step one. Uh, residency, licensed business in Pasco, et cetera, you you're not eligible. So you're not, you're no longer considered first in, you're actually first out. Um, so there, uh, the applications are assessed first come, first served. However, the step process requires um an analysis of your criteria. And once you don't meet the criteria for further uh processing, then then you're out. And um, we're left then with uh, we get two hundred and fifty applications, let's say. It it's kind of like putting a n- a bunch of numbers and names in a sifter and the ones that fall out are the ones that are going to be. First in, first eligible. So it is the hierarchy and. I I hope that answers your question. Um, I'm not sure if it does, but it is a hierarchy, but it still is essentially. First come, first served, but once you don't meet the criteria, then you're no longer eligible, so you're out. So then you have a pool of those first come. Applications that are now eligible and they're considered in order as you would expect.
Thank you, yeah, that does answer my question.
Okay, anybody else with any questions from Mister White?
Councilmember Maloney.
Yes, Mister Maloney.
Yeah, Mister White, um, you know, we we went to this in some fair detail, um. Um, uh, back at this this a little ago last week, um, and I think maybe a bit the week before. Um, and I just want to, I just want to be clear that the emails that we received today. It looked like, um, if I was looking at the timestamps of those, um, the city or the D P D A had responded to to the uh applicant who had concerns. Prior to us receiving any feedback that this was going um poorly for the applicant. Um, is that, is that correct? Did I, did I follow that chain correctly in the email?
Uh, yes, Mister Maloney, that is correct and uh. The applicant, if I'm recalling the numbers right, submitted uh comments roughly eleven ten A M this morning, uh. She was responded to at roughly eleven twenty-five A M this morning. And uh, and uh, I think the email you counsel received and city manager. Was roughly twelve thirty, little bit afternoon, uh, and since that time, by the way, uh. The applicant has uh set up a meeting with our block grant coordinator to make sure that she has. Um, whatever it is she's uh, whatever's necessary for her to submit a complete application. And by the way, the only thing necessary, if I understand things correctly, is the most current year tax return, which in this case is twenty nineteen. Versus twenty eighteen.
Mister White, I know, um, I I'm gonna get, sorry, just a little into a, into a a possible subtlety here. I know that there was delays in that uh tax filings this year, um, the federal government, I R S were a lot for uh extensions. Um, have we passed those standard extensions um with the I R S so that that uh? The most recent tax form that we're looking for is definitely available?
Y- yes, the deadline was July fifteenth and uh. It should be relatively simple for the applications, or excuse me, the applicants to upload their latest tax return.
Great, thank you. I just wanted to make sure I understood a little bit of that because obviously we're getting a lot of cross talk here and. And just just what I'm following is that there, you know, I understand that this is really frustrating and I really, really wish we could have a simpler application process. Um, but I know that we're really beholden to the federal guidelines and federal standards here. Um, and unfortunately, that requires a whole lot of complexity and legalese that is not dictated by the city. So I I hope that that any of the concerns we're seeing, they're not, none of these are self-created, it doesn't sound like, or at least not. Not many, but maybe some of the hiccups towards the beginning of the process, but it seems like we've ironed a number of those out. So I guess, um, I hope that, well, some people are really frustrated. They understand that. We're doing the best we can as well, and I believe the D P D A from our conversations is is trying to help where 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 possible. Um, the federal government does not make this stuff easy on on anyone, and for this small amount of money, we're. It's requiring a whole lot of work on people's, on people's behalf. They could make a whole lot more money than this is opening their business if we had that as an option, so. Um, anyways, uh, I just, I just, I guess I just wanted to 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 acknowledge that we're hearing a lot of cross talk, but. But um, as we've dug into it and what what I can understand of this process, um. There, I don't think there's a whole lot more that we can expect of D P D A and this, right, at this point in time and certainly. Uh, can't expect much more out of city staff, so. Good luck and I I hope people take that, take that with a little bit of understanding that we're, we're all in this trying to, trying to, trying to do a good thing and help out here.
Thank you, Mister Maloney, and and uh just another thing to make sure uh the listeners and council is aware of, um. The money that goes out the door is not, we don't have this fund of money in the bank. Uh, these are city funds that go out the door and then once the appropriate uh. Requirements for reimbursement are complied with, we get the money back. So it's it's not as if we're giving money that we have from the federal government. We don't have this money yet. And we won't get it until we submit the federal required documents to be reimbursed. That's why such care is being taken with following federal guidelines and and frankly, HUD was very candid about this. They again recommended, please don't use a new program, use an existing program. Because of the difficulties with retrofitting federal requirements with an untested procedure. Um, unfortunately, in order to do this, we had to create a new program. Uh, some cities did not, uh, Richland, for example, didn't have to, although, by the way. I did notice that Richland hasn't, or at least as of late last week, had not got any federal CARES Act money out the door either. Um, but you're right, essentially, uh, with the federal requirements and the reporting requirements. So we don't have to pay this back at some point in the future. We're doing uh. As best we can, given the rapid circumstances and the difficulties with a new program.
Thank you, Mister White.
All right, thank you for that, Mister Maloney and Mister White. Um, I know that frustration setting in for many people and it's been that way for a while. Uh, well, hopefully we can get a resolve to the situation and um, and uh. The applicants can get the correct information in so that uh they can get um. So they can uh have the opportunity to receive some funds if if uh, if if it applies or if it, if they get approved. So thank you for that. And with that, any other miscellaneous discussion from any other council members?
Yes, Mayor Martinez, this is Councilmember Roach, and I just have one tangentially related. Uh, a comment for Mister White and then something I didn't get in at the beginning with the council report, so. Uh, Mister White, I was uh riding my bike with my son uh on Sunday and we went to Road sixty-eight. Uh, we saw a few different restaurants there that um have made their. You know, their accommodations for social distancing and to be in compliance with the orders. Uh, the business owners that I spoke to, they're, you know, they're all food, uh, restaurant establishments. Um, did not know about opening up outdoors um. On sidewalks in parking stalls and so. I was wondering what, if anything, can be done to help. Uh, these owners who might benefit in this season from being able to open up, especially in kind of strip mall areas where they do have. Enough parking stalls to do so, uh, what can we do from a city perspective to? Get the word out to them or to landlords, for that matter, uh, of those areas that they have permission to do so.
Well, thank you for that. I I guess that's a good question. I get, um. The outdoor seating requirement, uh, of of course, is part of our, let's say, our modified phase one uh state regulation. Um, I suppose that we can more prominently advertise the emergency order Mayor Martinez signed. Uh, several weeks ago regarding the availability of, you know, on s- on street parking or off-street parking. And um, I'm not sure, though, that, um. The Council, Councilwoman Roach, yes, I I don't know offhand right now. I suppose the best thing to do is go with a public website announcement and uh. See if we can tune that up a little bit to get the word out more. I'm I'm frankly a bit surprised that no one seems to know about that, but. I understand, I understand their concern.
I don't think that nobody knows about it, like, for example, Road sixty-eight Fiesta Mexican Restaurant, they already have outdoor seating. They were using it, but you know, we uh, w- we were just kind of cruising through that area and checking different things out. Uh, in the s- strip mall that's by Yokes, you could see that, you know, uh, Jimmy John Jones or whatever that sub shop is. They, they have outdoor seating, the steakhouse was making modifications to their. Foyer so that it's more of like a walk-up window and you can't actually enter the restaurant. And so it just happened to talk to these different establishments and ask them. You know, wh- what they were doing or what they're, you know, what they knew and they they didn't know. Um, Dairy Queen, even though it has an outdoor seated patio, they have caution tape all around their furniture and. And have no seating allowed um at all, even though they have the space even before this pandemic. And so I just found it curious that um all these different establishments are are just kind of doing what they think they're su-. Supposed to do to stay afloat and and continue to get customers, but. Um, you know, another one was Noodle Zone, which is right in that same closet with Wingstop. Uh, and that owner didn't know. You know, that they could, they could use parking spaces and so, I mean, I'm willing to help these business owners in whatever way and get that information out there. Um, beyond just website, um, if we have any sort of informational flyers or anything to to get to them. Because I think, you know, as we were talking before, there's not enough of these grants to go around to keep everybody afloat. They may not fulfill the requirements of the eligibility and so. Um, whatever way we can go above and beyond getting them the accommodations that they need to. Be successful, I think, is is really important to them and to me.
Mister Councilmember Maloney, if I can just jump in for one second, um, I agree formally with with uh Ms. Roach there and. Mister White, we we talked with in terms of the grants of um the possibility of being able to use our business license database. To be able to send more direct communications to some of these businesses. Um, and I would strongly encourage that you continue to evaluate that as a potential option. As to how can we directly reach out and let people know, don't assume, not assuming people are gonna be looking at the, you know, our website or. Or or even checking Facebook or whatever, but rather to to directly through our own direct channels to businesses to. Um, ensure that they're aware of these, these, um, you know, potential items here. So just this is a, uh, to to pile on to what what Ms. Roach is saying. Um, ensure that they're aware of these, these, um, you know, potential items here, so just, this is a, uh, to, to pile on to what, what Ms. Roach is saying. Um, that'd be a suggestion I would, I would continue to, uh, emphasize, thank you.
And this is Councilman Serrano, maybe one option would be to utilize our various chambers of commerce. Um, they may have a better direct mailing list where they could say, hey, you know, here's a link to what's going on in Pasco. Um, you know, these are the, you know, contact these individuals, so. They might be able to do the quick and dirty work, um, and then run it back to the city.
Good point, Mr. Serrano.
Thank you for that, that brainstorming there, fellow council members, and, um, I think the last thing that I, that's not related, that I didn't get to say during council reports. Was just that I was at a visit Tri-Cities meeting, um, on Wednesday, they were recognized. Uh, for achieving, uh, you know, something in the, the. Um, their industry, it's called Destination Management Accreditation Program. It's a really big deal in their industry, and so I wanted to at least recognize that and brag about them a bit, they did that well. Um, and they're, they also, Michael Mabakovich, uh, you know, created another. Social distancing, uh, video, and so that's up too, so just those couple things, thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman Roach, appreciate that information and, uh, those comments. Anybody else from miscellaneous, before we adjourn?
I, I'm gonna jump in real quick, I saw that the Chief Rossky threw in a cup, in the chat box, a couple of comments, um. Back on the social services questions, he noted that they, that Pasco PD keeps a list of social services. That they work with during these crises, uh, Pasco PD Foundation has a Pasco Care's Fund. Where a field officer can access funds, uh, to assess someone in the heat of the moment, or the fold of the moment, as it may be. Um, looks like Councilwoman Roach had a question about whether or not the department's mental staff, uh, assists in these types of calls. And the chief indicated that they do what as available, um, so. Reading words of his not putting words in his mouth, um, I got a thumbs up, so apparently I conveyed the message adequately, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Serrano, appreciate that. Okay, well, uh, there will not be a need for an executive session tonight, I don't think Chief Gear's up to that. So, so with that, uh, council members, thank you very much for, uh, for, uh, spending the, the meeting. Uh, or spending time with us at this meeting, and, um. Have a great week, and we'll see you in the next meeting, this meeting is adjourned, thank you.
Bye.